Thank you for being here, everybody. We are gonna go ahead and get started. It's one minute past six, so we'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with roll call, please.
Say here.
You just walked in.
Here.
Thanks.
Wait, some echo.
Uh, Creeps?
There we go, we should.
You want the second?
All right.
Creeps.
Creeps.
Here, 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 here.
Laird?
Here.
Barhawk?
Here.
Montse Mayor?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
We have Cor.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes from our last meeting. Local liquor licensing authority items for Katie and Kay special event. Brass Anvil liquor license renewal, Tiny Pine Bistro liquor license renewal. Approval of environmental board application for best shoemaker. Authorizing check signing and other banking business for who's gonna be our interim town manager, Kevin Shoresman, our public works director as long as well as our interim finance director. And the 2025 trail overlay agreement and accounts payable from June 10th. Any questions or items to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, motion then?
I would move to approve the consent agenda. I second.
Motion by Erica, second by Christina. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment. If there's any members of the public here who would like to address the board on something that doesn't have a public comment section on the agenda, you can just approach the mic one at a time. Start off with your name, and if you live in Carbondale or elsewhere, and address your comments to me, and you have about three minutes.
I live, do you? Yeah, I live right downtown. Uh, I've done that for thirty, almost thirty-five years, and I've been in the valley for fifty-five years. So I'm an old timer.
And can you just share your name with us, Doc, for the record?
Doc Philip, P H I L I P.
Thanks, Doc.
Okay, uh. This is less than one sentence. We, uh. Carbondale should try and get its population down to, um. Well. What I'm gonna, uh, tell you is that we can do, um. Yeah, we helped get it the Dan Line Day, and we're trying to, uh. Get, uh, Carbondale down to, um. Oh, you're, you're, you're here, okay.
We're here, we're waiting for you, Doc.
We need to, yeah, my two minutes are almost up.
Maybe we can follow up over coffee on Friday. How's that sound?
We're gonna follow up with a coffee?
Like to come and chat over coffee if you don't have what you're ready to share with us right now. We'd be, I'd be happy to talk with you later.
Well, it's just the, uh, one sentence. And I'll be coming back again in two weeks. With another sentence. But we can, um. Well. I'll put this off, uh, two weeks then.
Okay, thanks, Doc. Thank you for being here. Anybody else like to address the board? Go ahead. Hi.
Hi. Good evening to you all. Um, my name is Maria Romero. I live at Mountain Valley Mobile Home Park. I'm sure you know why I'm here. I am here to tell you a little bit about our, about our park. There is sixty-four units there, sixty-four mobile homes. There is sixty-four families there, kids, adults, seniors. We have, uh, we have over, uh, two hundred people there, two hundred and fifty. We have sixty-five kids that attend the Carbondale schools. There's people that have lived there for over thirty-seven years. I was talking to, you know, the oldest tenant there, and she says she's been there for thirty-seven years. She remembers when she used to pay a hundred and eighty dollars of space rent. And right now, we are in the danger of going up to sixteen hundred dollars. I'm here to ask you for funding. We need funding. Um, the, uh, you know, the uncertainty, there's a lot of, um. You know, there's a lot of us are not certain what's gonna happen. So we need this funding for us to be able to stay and be able to afford, um, our rent, our space rent. Along the kids there that we have there, there's, uh, there's two little girls that came up to me when the park was, uh, put up for sale at first. They overheard their parents. You know, talking about this, like, what's gonna happen to our home? Mom, where are we gonna go? Dad, where are we gonna go? Very, very concerned kids. They're saying, you know, are we in the danger of going to live under a bridge? You know, so they came to me, both of those little girls came to me and they said, Maria, how can we help? We wanna stay here. We wanna stay here. We've lived here. We were born here. So we, what, how can we help? I mean, I just, you know, there was nothing I could do. I just said. We'll just have to stay together, talk to your mom and dad about it. There is nothing, there's nothing we can do. Let mom and dad handle it. You know, very worried kids. So that, that just breaks my heart to hear the kids worried about where they're gonna go, where their homes are gonna go, or, or what's gonna happen to us. So, um, there is about ten of us here today that are, um, you know, in support of me. To ask you for these funds to help us stay there, to help us keep our homes and to, um, be able to, to afford it. There is, um. There is, there was four senior citizens that fix, that live on fixed income. Well, one of them has put up their, their home for sale because they say that sixteen hundred dollars, they will not be able to afford. They can barely make their, you know, thousand dollar payment right now. So, uh, they put up their home for sale. I talked to them. What are your plans? Where are you gonna go? Um, and they said. Wherever we can buy with what we make with, or with the sale of our home. So that's, that's very heartbreaking for them to, to live after being there for over thirty years.
Thank you.
So, so yes, um, that's why we're here.
Great, thank you. And if anybody else likes to speak, they can. We just try to limit to about three minutes per person.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, we have been discussing it, and we are gonna add it to future agenda items, and we are very seriously considering a pretty large contribution.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Maddie. I am also a current resident of the Mountain Valley Mobile Home Park. Um, I grew up here in the valley, uh, was born in, um, the hospital here in Aspen. Graduated from Morey Fork High School, uh, twenty sixteen. Um, when I came back in March of twenty twenty during the very beginning of the pandemic, um, my. Now husband and I lived in a rental in Glenwood. Uh, when we had the opportunity to buy our home in Mountain Valley, we took up the opportunity because at that point it was more affordable than our rental in Glenwood. In twenty twenty. Um, and it still, at this point, continues to be an affordable option for us. We now have kids, uh, that we plan on hopefully raising in the valley and going to Carbondale schools. Carbondale has always been our home, and we hopefully to make it like continue to be our home. I'm here today to basically thank the town of Carbondale staff and the board trustees as well for their continued conversations, uh, related to our park. Because it's, it is extremely important to help keep, um, an affordable option for my family, but future families and, um, current owners as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. Anyone else like to address the board?
How's it going?
Yeah, just tell us your name, please.
My name is Zebreselva. I'm also a resident at Mount Valley, born and raised here in Carbondale, actually. These sixty-four homes, sixty-four families, over ninety percent of which are blue collar workers. Are they very people that keep the, are the backbone of this community, not only Carbondale, but Roaring Fork Valley? These are the people that you see keeping the lights on, the water running, the stores moving. You, I mean, with the danger of displacement, what is gonna happen to? To that shunk of working class that Carbondale and the valley depend on. These are kind of the. Food for thought that I wanted you guys to consider. Not only that, all the students that are E2 depend on, from being here. A lot of my neighbors are senior citizens that. Can't fully retire. They have to have a second job to be able to afford rent. In the ten years, we've seen rent go from four fifty to pushing over a thousand. New residents paying over fifteen hundred. Including mortgage, talking about thirty-five hundred. A week without work would throw it all off. So I wanted you to give your thanks for listening and working hard, and we appreciate all the work that you do. And we hope we can keep this community in Carbondale and. For the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? Yeah, go ahead.
Hi. Hi, my name is Jeff Bosler, and I have a partner in the subject matter, Rennie Mayfield here tonight, but, uh. I recently retired. I live here in Carbondale. I live at the ranch, or I consider myself a resident of. A vested interest in the town of Carbondale, along with Rennie, who lives right in town. The subject matter, uh, is called beautification, Carbondale, and, um. Met Patrick last week and have since met Eric and Kevin and Andrea from the Chamber of Commerce. This is a really interesting town. We love it so much. And probably the greatest asset and the reason so many people love Carbondale is this community that we have. We all love Carbondale. So, uh, it was back on Memorial Day. I was heading back to the front range and came through town and. Having not lived here a long time, I didn't understand that the planter project, right, everything, you adopt a pot and plant accordingly. And, uh, I was disappointed to see no flowers. It's like, jeez, come on. We're not Basalt, we're not Aspen, we don't wanna be, but we care enough. To plant flowers, and I posted, uh. Yeah, on, uh, the Facebook Carbondale Community Board. Well, that just spawned, I said, I was disappointed. I was wondering, where did that get it going, right? This, that, and everything else. And what a, what a difficult balance those of you entrusted with, uh, this community's present day, future. Present day and future have to balance what makes us cool. Even if it includes a bench that's been sitting out on the side of the poorhouse because it doesn't really matter to us. Balanced against beautification of Main Street where commerce is so important. And, um, so anyway, all of this has led over the past two weeks to an idea, and not a lot more than that, though. I personally invested in the money to put us at First Friday with a booth, and for lack of a better word, called us the Carbondale Beautification Club. And what if there were volunteers as an extension of the town that participated in specific projects, initiatives? That created beautification or simply clean up or task us. And, uh, over the course of real no effort at all, sixty or seventy volunteers have gotten to us, or, yeah, they've found us. And said, we'd like to participate in that. That can be everything from a street corner, um, raised bed, to a bench, to, you know, that's broken down, sitting over there. To blowing every morning, a volunteer blows the sidewalks of Main Street. To the post office, to the roundabout, to whatever. So we have a name that may change. We have an idea that we'd like to, uh, evolve. With the town or think there may be value in that to leverage our greatest asset, which is the community itself.
Great, thank you.
Right? I'll let you go, but, uh, um, I'm going to leave, uh, a simple survey. That we, uh, shared with, who've been sharing, to gauge people's specific interest in what beautification may mean to them.
You can leave that with.
I'll leave it with Patrick. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? Lots of public comments tonight. It's good. We often go a couple of weeks without many. Okay, anybody online that would like to address the board? Okay, well, we will move on then. Thank you for all those thoughtful comments tonight. Um, trustee comments. Anybody wanna get us started? Anything since we last met? Go ahead, Erica.
I guess I'll start off on addressing some of the public comments. I just, it'd be great if we have contact information from folks from Mountain Valley. Just so that you can get notifications that we're talking about, um, have it on our agenda. So, um, maybe that's already happened and, um, but just make sure that. Either staff has your contact information or even, uh, one of us, we can let you know that, um, we're talking about it on our agenda, so you can come to those meetings as well. And then Jeff, I do just wanna commend you for, um, I did see your Facebook post, and, um, I, uh, appreciate you, um. The grace you had in the turnaround of, um, you know, listening to the locals and then obviously turning your idea into action. So, um, nice job. I also think you may have been on Red Hill this morning and fed my puppy a little treat, so we might have met earlier. Those are, uh, I missed our, the other comment is I just wanted to give a really big shout out to our First Friday and our pride parade last week. I was out of town, unfortunately. But, uh, saw that I got some press and, um, was just so, uh, impressed with our community for kicking off June, um, with such an awesome celebration, and I'm sure others are gonna commend it who were, um. Lucky enough to be there, but just really wanted to thank staff and all of our community members for showing up for that.
Great, thanks, Erica. Christina, any comments?
Yeah, I, um, I'm a part of this, um, transportation coalition. It's about, um, reducing or eliminating traffic congestion in the entrance of Aspen. But it affects all of us in the valley, so it's nice that they have different representatives there. Um, there's gonna be about ten meetings, and they're about four hours long every Thursday, well, at least, uh, once a month on Thursdays. But for now, the, these first couple of meetings have been presentations, consultants coming in, talking about, um, different case studies they've done with other towns, even, um, in Europe, some other countries. Where they talk about pricing congestion and express tolls and everything, um, that can reduce traffic. So it's pretty interesting. Um, no decisions yet, but, um, you know, it's a pretty, it's a, it's a, it's a good group, and I feel like we're gonna. Make a difference with that, um, congestion going into Aspen. Um, and then, um, I'm not gonna talk too much about the Latino Advisory Board because they're gonna be here presenting, so I'm excited about that. We had a meeting in the, and we have, our meetings are the first Monday of each month, and, um, we're gonna be doing a park tour next Monday, so that's exciting. A lot of the board members haven't been to some of the parks in, in town. So we'll be doing that. Um, and I saw Ross at the Art Around Town. I, I missed First Friday. I had to go to Denver, but I did get to go to Art Around Town, and that's always a really fun event. It talks about all the sculptures that are going up around town. I encourage it. And then, yeah, and then just public comments. Thank you for everybody being here, and as, uh, Mayor said, we're looking into funding and we're having discussions. So thanks for coming and representing, um, the mobile home. We know how important, um, that is to our community. So thank you so much.
Great, thanks for seeing us. Colin?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, mention the progress that's ongoing with the mobile home parks. And I think part of it stems from how organized the residents have been. So Maria's efforts and all the other members of the Mobile Home Park, your efforts to work with this La Rock have been very inspiring, and I think has. Been part of the conversation in terms of how local governments can help. So more, more to come on that front. And, uh, yeah, kudos on First Friday, great event, despite it being a little on the jelly side for June, uh, but it was a lot of fun, lots of, nice to see joy in our community. At a time where sometimes there isn't any. So, uh, kudos to everybody, and, uh, that's all I have.
Great. Ross?
Yeah, I, I wasn't at First Friday because I was with the other half of Carbondale, um, at the Palisade Bluegrass Festival, and, um, was fortunate enough to perform, but the point I wanted, wanted to bring up was just how. Comfortable it's, it felt to be in that setting, looking out, and basically the entire, you know, southwest quadrant of the, of the, of the stage grounds or the, the fairgrounds. Were basically a solid contingent of Carbondale faces. Um, and I think it says something about our community when, when they get together like that, and, you know, and, and, and a lot of folks, not necessarily just one clique, but, but a handful of folks, and you couldn't really walk. Five minutes without saying hi to someone, and I think, I think that's a special. And I think, I think that's a special thing. And so apologies to the First Friday folks, because there are a lot of really great people missing, missing from, from First Friday because they were all, all over there in tents. Wanted to recognize, yeah, Maria and Maddie, and I didn't get your name, but thank you so much for coming and speaking. It's, it's so important, I think, to come, come and speak publicly. And I just want to encourage folks to, to do that and, and know that we are, you know, and are thinking about this, this particular community very, very, very seriously and understand its importance to our town. And I think anecdotes are wonderful to hear. They really are. We, we need to hear more about what's happening. Sometimes even some, some communities are not quite front and center, but still very, very, very vital. What else do we got here? Jeff, thanks so much for kind of getting something rolling. I think a, a citizen initiative like that is, is always something to, to, to be appreciative of. And again, sends, sends a good message to the community and sends, reinforces our notion of, of just a vibrant and active community when people sign up like that. Which leads me to the Art Walk, which was an amazing experience. I had a few friends from Aspen who were down and you could tell that they were not just impressed, but, but really, not envious, but maybe a little bit of, of the, of the fifty or sixty people who kind of got together to walk around in the rain and look at this, this, these sculptures. I just think it was really, really the very, the very best, very best of this town. And, and Jeff, I, back to you for a second. I do encourage you to talk to Kevin and maybe involve yourself in the tactical urbanism, street calming, traffic calming measures that are happening. The corner beside my house is suddenly much calmer. We have a bunch of little plastic things and the corner is much, 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 much tighter. But people are taking their time and it's interesting to see like literally immediate results, like absolutely immediate results and people aren't zooming down Eighth Street at forty miles an hour. And finally, I just want to acknowledge, as Colin did a little bit there, in seeing all this joy, to acknowledge that, that we are a small town. And while we should think, think globally and act locally, I think I, I have certainly heard and participated in conversations with Carbondale members who, who have real concerns about what's happening sort of to democracy globally and nationally. And I think we need to, you know, be vigilant here and vocal. We're not far away from any, anything happening that could suddenly put us in, in a situation where we need to, to be aware and not be scared. And I certainly hope that to whatever extent we, we are tempted to be fearful of speaking our minds or, or pretend things don't exist. And I'm not saying that we're, we're doing any of that, but to the, to the, any, any extent that we, that we operate out of a basis of fear, maybe grants or something like that, that we shouldn't. And I think, you know, we, we should think more, more historically and not just about what may happen in twenty-five and twenty-six. And so in, in, just to reflect on, on folks that who have contacted me and, and wanted us as a board to kind of acknowledge that, I want to acknowledge that.
Great, thanks Ross. Chris?
I'll echo a lot of things that have already been mentioned here about the folks from the trailer park. Thank you for coming and absolutely, we're, we're going to keep talking about that. On the, yeah, thank you for the larger conversations I've heard from constituents as well about those kinds of issues. On events, yeah, the First Friday didn't seem to take one bit of a hit from half the town being in Palisade. It's a juggernaut, really. It's kind of incredible, the like inertia it has sort of as an event at this point. Almost to the point of depressing all the activity around it on either side to some degree. But it's, it's, yeah, it's pretty amazing that we have that, I guess. And yeah, just in this, in the realm of events, obviously, the farmer's market is now rolling on Wednesdays downtown. Lot of great stuff. Great to just be downtown during the day on Wednesdays and, and there's a bunch of vendors. And then also Katie and Kay will host an album release party for this local band Typical Ghost coming Friday, the twentieth at our station. So that's an upcoming event that we just approved on the consent agenda. And then, speaking of beautification, I, I would also encourage Jeff to connect with the Bee Friendly Carbondale Group. They are already pretty committed to working on, especially around the Thompson House, which I think is a great opportunity to, there's a bunch of sort of gardens that are potentially perennial gardens that can get established, but they need to be taken care of like continuously for five or six years to become established. So those really would benefit from like a considered volunteer effort. And I think that the like longevity of it is the key question because there's been a lot of waves of volunteerism in the past, but they haven't always resulted in long-term commitments. And so the staff can get resentful of projects that become their problem to deal with later, so. But I think the Bee Friendly is a great ally for sure on that. And then as well as the art, Public Art Commission and the, and the Bike Ped Trails Committee, which did have a meeting recently. And yeah, we got sort of a detailed update on where they're doing the tactical urbanism. It looks like it's West Main Street, Hendrick, West Sopris and Eighth Street are kind of the beginning areas. And so those, by Kevin's mind, sort of span quite a bit of different kinds of street types. And have all been identified as places where people speed or people feel uncomfortable on bikes and stuff. So we'll see, but there's also the Bike Ped Commission itself is, is working pretty assiduously to develop some like level of survey associated with it. And they're hopefully going to have like a QR code thing with a little thing that you can scan at the site of the projects. If people say they want to give feedback on what they think works or doesn't work in the context. So that's hopefully, they're working on refining that. And then there'll be more feedback, obviously, over the summer, probably just generally to us and stuff. So that's exciting to finally see the MAP project kind of get to a, to a tangible stage. And then also Kevin did mention that the twenty, the one thirty-three crossing is not dead. It's just grinding its way through the final gears of sort of C dot stuff. And I think it'll be pretty close to something that can be put out to bid soon. So he's hoping that that can happen this year, so. That'd be pretty exciting. Anyway, so I think there's many, plenty more that Bike Ped talked about, about priority corridors and other crossings and stuff like that. I think that's all. Let me see if there's anything else I mentioned. Yeah, I think that's good enough.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Yeah, not right now. Thanks, Sue. We're gonna, Sue, we're gonna finish with our trustee comments. Sorry, you can't just interrupt the meeting. I'm sorry. No, love you, but no. Thank you for all those comments. I was also at Palisade Bluegrass, so can't comment on First Friday, but heard it was great. Same with the Art Walk, missed that, but great, great stuff going on there. Wanted to just highlight a couple of things coming up for the board and the public to be aware of. One is that this Thursday at five-thirty at the Third Street Center, we have a meet and greet with our four finalists for our town manager. So if you'd like to meet and interact with and give us comments on who you think might be a great fit for Carbondale's next town manager, taking Lauren's place when she retires at the end of this month or shortly thereafter, please join us at the Third Street Center, five-thirty to seven on Thursday. We will be locked in this room all day Friday, so make sure you're ready for that. And really looking forward to it. And we have a great, great group of finalists. Upcoming meetings, wanted to note tonight's a fairly short agenda. And Lauren and I were talking about that today. And one of the items that we had originally had on tonight's agenda that we took off was starting to prioritize and asking staff to really do a lot of work prioritizing capital projects. Staff told Lauren, and I totally understand and agree, they need a CFO in order to do that and start to work within budgets and numbers and stuff like that. So just for the board's awareness, we're going to get an update on, you know, what it would look like to go to the voters for a tax question. Patrick can put that kind of stuff together without a CFO at the end of this month. But I don't anticipate that we're going to dig deep into that big capital budgeting process until we have a new manager and a new Chief Financial Officer onboard. Happy to talk more about that offline, but that's kind of where that is. Hasn't been forgotten, but has been like pressed pause. Next week before our meeting, we have the pool tour, if you can join at four fifteen. So hopefully everybody can make that. And then we have our meeting with the Garfield County Commissioners where we have dinner at five-thirty. And then we have a really nice meeting, a work session next week. That's a joint work session with the County Commission, Park and Rec Commission Annual Update and Bike Ped Trails Annual Update. So I'm sure we'll hear more about the MAP, the Mobility Access Plan Implementation at that. And then on the twenty-fourth, it will be Lauren's last meeting, so we'll take her out afterwards. And anybody's welcome to join us for that, for a little celebration of her service to the town. And a couple of other small items on there for now, and we'll see what else gets added. But just wanted everybody to kind of have a preview of the month. And that's all I got. Anything we missed from the board? Okay. Let's move on then with attorney's comments. Mark, anything?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Lauren, hopefully I didn't steal everything from you, but I wonder if...
Made my job a lot easier.
Okay, some of those might have been on both of our lists, I could tell.
One quick question or one quick correction, the tour next week, and I'll send an email. I was going to do it today, but I ran out of time. Starts at four-thirty.
Four-thirty, okay.
At four fifteen.
Okay.
Should be plenty of time to do the tour, get back here for dinner and then have a meeting with the Commissioners. Just so that you're aware, Eric and I went to Aspen this afternoon and made a presentation about the pool to the Pitt King County Commissioners. We are hoping to do the same thing for Garfield and potentially Eagle. Whether they decide to donate to our pool project is completely up to them. But it was nice to let them know what we're doing and what it's going to look like and how it's going to help and affect our valley as a whole. And then the only other thing that I have is I'd like to thank David Perez for being here and interpreting for us tonight. And hopefully we'll see more of him as we get more multilingual people in the room.
Great. All right, thank you, Lauren. Yeah, and along those lines, we should all be mindful that we have an interpreter here. So just as we're speaking to make it as clear as we can, because he's trying to keep up with us in real time. But I know that, you know, we have a tendency to drift back from our microphones and all that. So let's just make it, make his job as easy as we can. All right, action items. We are starting with the Latino Advisory Board update. So members of the Latino Advisory Board, if you'd like to join us, I think we have a couple of chairs here. I don't know how exactly you all want to do this, but we welcome you to pull up some more chairs or somebody can sit on the end by our attorney, somebody can stand at the podium. I might just introduce this by way of background for folks who aren't aware. We passed a resolution in 2023 establishing a Latino Advisory Board with a pretty clear set of goals that mostly involve kind of being a two-way communication channel with our Latino and Spanish-speaking community and our board. So we can know about making sure that that large part of our community's needs are met by our services and decisions. We can get more people involved and we can also find out information from, from you all and you can help share information with your community with us. So that, I'll stop and just welcome you. And if you could start with introducing yourselves and just tell us a little bit about what's going on. And these updates are always good opportunities to get feedback. If you have questions, should we do this? Should we do that? It's a great opportunity for that, but maybe we'll start with introductions.
And good evening to everybody. I am president of the, of the Latino Advisory Committee. I've lived here in Carbondale for over twenty-two years.
Hello, my name is Viviana Quintero. I am also a, a member of the Carbondale community. I've lived here for over thirty years and I am the Vice President of the Latino Advisory Board.
Great, thank you for being here.
Hi, my name is Hannah. I've lived in the valley for eighteen years and I am, I'm also part of the Latino Advisory Board.
Hi, my name, my name is Oscar Abello. I'm relatively new. I've lived here for four years and I'm a member of the Latino Advisory Board.
Great. And I believe your, your board liaison is Christina and she's been working with you all. Thank you for, for all the work you've done, Christina.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and share an update from the Latino Advisory Board, also known as LAB. We officially launched in January and we have met every first Monday since. As a new board, we're still learning, but we've already identified key priorities to better serve the Latino community in Carbondale. One of our main initiatives in launching a town of carbon, excuse me. One of our main initiatives is launching a Town of Carbondale WhatsApp channel, a one-way communication tool to share important announcements with Latino residents. We chose WhatsApp because it's widely used in our community, especially for staying connected with family abroad. It's also accessible. It works with Wi-Fi, which is helpful for those without mobile data. We plan to roll it out in two phases. Phase one will include town announcements like meeting notices, trash pickup information and safety alerts. Phase two will expand to include trusted community resources like health fairs, nonprofit events and educational opportunities. All content will be bilingual and reviewed by LAB to ensure accuracy and relevance. We're asking for your support to recognize the WhatsApp channel as an official town communication platform. It will complement existing outreach and help close communication gaps for many residents. Outside of this project, LAB is also focused on increasing civic engagement. We're inviting Latino residents to our meetings and attending other town board and commission meetings so we can listen, learn and share information back with our community. We appreciate your support as we continue building stronger relationships and creating a more connected and inclusive Carbondale. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are we, are you open to questions and discussions? I mean, I'll just start and then open up to questions, but, and other feedback. But I want to start by just saying thank you for volunteering your time. We realize it's an unpaid position, takes you away from your family, your, your jobs, your, your downtime. So thank you for dedicating your time to the town and to the community. This has been a board that we tried unsuccessfully to get going for quite a while until Christina joined the board and really put her effort into it. So thank you for being part of that and making it happen. I'll stop there and just see what questions or feedback the other commission members have on this idea or anything else that we want to discuss with this board in our annual update. Anybody have a question or feedback?
Something, a great idea to me. I just, I, I know you, you've mentioned in there that it's sort of a one, the idea of the WhatsApp thing in particular, that being a sort of a one-way communication. And I, I respect that for, for the WhatsApp thing. At the same time, I, I want to make sure that we have some way of, of with all of those things, making... making sure that we have contact information that's easy to go in the other direction, when, so that folks from the Latino and Spanish-speaking communities can, can speak back, get, get, get back in touch with the government and, and with us, and, and with staff, and know that they will get someone who, get someone on the line who can speak their language. And so I hope that maybe that's part of the phased part going forward. But yeah, this sounds, sounds wonderful, and thank you again. This is, I think, overdue and much needed, and, and don't hesitate to, to come, come to us, I think, with, with more ideas, even, even, you know, sooner and less baked, if you need, if they need to be, you know? I think, I think it's really, this is, this is a, a big topic and something that, that we maybe haven't done well in ten or fifteen years, and, and that we have some momentum. I think we should really take advantage of it.
Are those things that you've discussed? I mean, I think two questions came up there for me. That one is a way for Spanish-speaking members of the community to communicate back to the town? And the other is, are there other kind of ideas that you've been working on?
Yeah, so it, it is ideas that we have been working on. I mean, we wanted to make it for now a one-way communication, just so people don't think, get overwhelmed by messages back and forth. So that's the, the reason why we're working on it as a one-way communication for now.
Okay. And are there other ideas on your agenda right now, or other projects that you're working on that we might see next time you come? Or is it mostly, and that's okay, it was mostly focused on this right now. We're just curious what else you've been talking about.
We've also had conversations of the things that are available in Carbondale, like the parks, so that people can be aware of them, of all the parks, and so that they can participate and visit them.
Yeah, so we're, we're definitely working on a park tour, just so we can let our community know that there is parks that are, we're welcome to, because a lot of, I think, in our Latino community, we think, like, RBR, the parks are RBR, are open to public, and they are. So we want to let them know about that, and just also the events around town, like First Fridays, and like the, our, our round town and stuff.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, feedback?
I just have one comment. I also, I want to thank Anna Ramirez and Lauren, because, Mayor, thank you for saying that I had a big part of it, but I also feel like Anna and Lauren have a big part. And with that, we're gonna have a new town manager. We have four great candidates, but I really would like to see our Hispanic community out there welcoming, because I need them to know how important our Latino community is. So if you guys could get out there on Thursday, meet our applicants, because again, without Lauren's support, I don't think that this would have also been a challenge. So thank you, Lauren, for that.
Thanks for saying it. Anything else? Erica, anything?
No, I just really appreciate you identifying WhatsApp, you know, a tool that's used in, already in the community, and could be really easy for folks to, to sign up for. And I think there's just, that just goes to show that getting your input on items that we're dealing with, because communication has been a big priority of ours. And so just making sure that we're getting information out in as many different avenues as possible is really great to hear. So I appreciate the thought that you've put into how that would work and using that tool.
I just also like, really liked the commentary about the park access and stuff, and just I hope that you're feeling welcomed into the, at some point, the, you know, Parks and Rec is gonna undertake a new master plan, and as they make plans, they should, for sure, you think, be thinking about everyone's needs around that, so. It's right, good luck, good time to be ahead of the whole process right now, I think, so.
Anything else?
So what everybody else has said, thank you. And I think the main reason we really want this is we want the Latino community to be able to tell us what's working and what's not. So the more that we can get that kind of information, the better for all of us. So thank you for all you're doing. Really appreciate it.
Great, all right. Well, thank you for a nice update. I'm hearing a lot of, oh, sorry.
Well, I just wanted to add, because I'm the liaison for the Parks and Rec Commission, and I know they would love to hear from you as well. Actually, they're doing their Parks Tour tomorrow, and they just pick a few parks every year that all the commissions, we, you know, go and ride their bikes around and go visit. But I think as you guys do your Parks Tour, and then if you do have feedback, or, you know, input on signage, or whatever it might be, I know the Parks and Rec Commission would love to hear that as well. So it could be, maybe we even talk about later this year, you guys get together and have a joint session with, or a presentation, or just so that they know you guys are here too. Because I do know, I think our Parks and Rec really is where we kind of touch most of the community. And so I think it'd be great for the commissioners to meet all of you, and you to meet them too. So maybe we could organize a joint session or something.
Thank you, thank you.
To, to wrap up, thank you for all those comments. It sounds like there's a lot of support for the work that you're doing. We support moving forward with the WhatsApp channel. I'm always a little hesitant, like, one more channel, you know? But I, you're working with Anna, and she's our Public Information Officer, so she'll make sure that it's, it's manageable, and there's not too many things people have to, you know, there's Facebook, there's email, there's the website, there's WhatsApp, but if that's what's needed for part of our community, I think that's a great idea. And I still see this board as a starting point and not an ending point for making our public process just more inclusive and more representative of our whole community. So there's been a lot of talk about Parks and Rec, like, some of you can join Parks and Rec. You can encourage other people to join Parks and Rec. We have openings on these committees all the time, and we very rarely see members of our Latino and Spanish-speaking community in those roles. So we want our government to represent the people that live here, and so you can help us with that as well. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys. Gracias.
Maribel, do you want to introduce Myra?
And I would like to, well, me again, I'd like to introduce someone else from a new organization that I've been working with. Centro de los Trabajadores.
The workers?
Yes.
Centro de los Trabajadores, it's a worker center.
Worker center. And I would like to introduce Myra, Executive Director for Centro de los Trabajadores, Work Center.
Gracias, Maribel. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
I'm a little nervous. It's my first time in Carbondale town, so.
Where, where do you live?
In Denver.
Sure, okay, well, welcome.
Thank you. So yes, my name is Myra Juárez Denis, and I'm the Executive Director of Centro de los Trabajadores, which is the only worker center in the whole state of Colorado that specializes in immigrant workers. So just so you have an idea what we do, we serve about two thousand workers in Denver. And you can, to summarize, a lot of the work we do is workforce development, where we train workers on three industries that are, where we need more workers in the state, which is construction, hospitality, and childcare. We have a program that is mostly, mostly sponsored by the city of Denver. It's called Work Ready, and we have a return investment, for instance, where we, we were able to place a hun, almost two hundred one of the, of the newcomers into the industries that I'm mentioning. And when this happened, I think after twenty years of history, we were able to solidify a lot of public and government and nonprofit and private sector together to see that investment in, in the immigrant workforce is very needed. So the other part that we specialize in is workers' rights, which is so needed for our worker, that are immigrants. And we have been researching, and not just in Denver, in many places around the state, that labor exploitation is a real issue. So that's the, the first item that we're gonna be bringing to Carbondale and Glenwood areas, where we need to bring more education to prevent wage theft. And so we're bringing workers' rights education, wage theft prevention, but also we help the workers to fact the claims, and also to help them walk through the whole process, which is very difficult. As you know, right now, it's very hard for the immigrant community to come to anything that is related to law, government, to report any abuse or labor exploitation, so that's what we do. We work with Denver Auditor's Office, we work with the CDLE, and private institutions, as well as towards Justice, who helps us file the legal claim that is related to, to their cases. So I want to thank Ms. Lauren, and actually, the Carbondale Police Department is already interested to work with us. We worked with them yesterday. So that's one of the things that they, they were very interested, because they will come, people will report wage theft cases, and they didn't know what to do with them, so now they can refer to us. So Maribel is our local contact, and she's gonna be helping along with Jessica, who's over there, our Workers' Rights Coordinator, to start that process. So slowly, we want to bring more of the programs that we have, but for now, is the wage theft prevention and workers' rights, to prevent labor exploitation that we're coming to your town. So thank you for having me today.
Thank you.
Here, any questions or comments there? Just an introduction?
Yes, so we are your service, and we're, we're happy to start working here.
Okay, great. It's great to hear that you've gotten off to a good start with our staff. We're not surprised, because that's the, that's the way we work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is our appointment of youth member to the Parks and Recreation Board. We chatted briefly as the meeting was starting that this is a unusual spot for us to be in, to have two youth applicants for a youth spot on a board, and have to choose one. But maybe we can, maybe we can do something better? Maybe we can appoint both, or do a, a member and an alternate, or something like that? So is there any staff, is there any staff input here on like what this is, or how to proceed, or just, we have what's in here?
Okay. Sorry, we haven't talked about having a primary and an alternate. That's not what the ordinance calls for, but there's really no reason that we couldn't.
Yeah.
I mean, the biggest question is, do they have voting rights? And I don't believe the youth members do, so I don't see it as an issue, unless you do.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
The question was, we have two youth applicants for one youth representative spot. And Ben just mentioned, could we just appoint a primary and an alternate? But since they don't have voting rights, I don't think it's a problem.
Absolutely fine, sorry, I missed the question.
And I think Erica has to.
Yeah, I am related to one of the applicants, and I feel like I should be ethical and refuse myself.
I think that's a good idea.
There's lots of money involved.
Money involved.
Yeah, we had two on this board. This is for Parks and Rec. But yeah, both of those are, are pretty fluid, I think. And it seemed to work well, actually, when we had two on here, because often one couldn't attend because of a conflict or whatever.
Yeah, I'm all for, if we have two students who really are excited about being on a board, let's let them be on the board.
Both have wonderful resumes.
Yeah, went through the process of applying, great stuff. I'll encourage that.
Oh, we can keep talking, or somebody could make a motion. I mean, it looks like Nick had four votes and Amalia had, Amalia had three. If, if you want to follow that.
I'd make a motion to appoint both Nick and Amalia to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Need to specify who's the member and who's the alternate. I guess they're both just members.
Let them, they can sort that out.
That's, that's fair enough. So we have a motion by Colin, second by Christina. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
I would obviously extend the invitation if they want to come to Bike Ped or Environmental Board. Those have no youth members, as far as I know. We had Oliver on Environmental Board, but I think he graduated, so.
Do all, I have just, do all the boards have a youth member? Because I know the Latino Advisory Board, we can have a youth member too. We just haven't found one.
I can't remember. When we tried to make them all kind of the same, all the boards, terms, and numbers and all that, I think we did add each one can have a youth member, but maybe they haven't been very proactive on trying to seek out that member. So yeah, it could be, these two could decide if they both want to serve there, or if one of them wants to go join another board.
Yeah, I think Parks and Rec has more experience, just having done it more regularly for longer than the other boards, but.
Okay. All right, thanks. Can we let Lauren and Erica back in? And next item on the agenda is planning and zoning interviews and appointments. Jared's here to help us with this. Thank you, Jared.
It is.
Oh, good, and Jeff's here too. Jeff, you want to just join us up at the board table? Thanks.
Perfect. So, thank you guys so much. For you tonight, we have two applicants for the Planning and Zoning Commission for two open seats, both alternate positions. As you guys may remember, the Planning and Zoning Commission appointment is a little different than the other boards and commissions. Requires an interview with a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we have Jeff Dablin here to help with that. We do have both applicants, Franco and Anne here. Anne has been serving for, yeah, a little, about six months or so. And then Franco is reapplying. Both had, had probably applied previously. And then to assist with your guys' questions, you know, we just kind of put together a few potential questions that you could ask, some issues that the Planning and Zoning Commission kind of deal with. Don't feel like obligated to use those questions, but just want to provide some thought-provoking questions for your interviews. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have a recommendation to reappoint Anne and to appoint Franco with the terms there on the second page of the staff memo, so. Happy to answer questions if you have any, otherwise I can sit back down and let you do the hard work.
Any questions for Jared? Shouldn't be too hard, since we have two positions open, they're both alternates, and we have two ready and willing candidates. But I do appreciate the suggested questions. I feel like at, at some point in the past, we had some things like that, and it might have just fallen by the wayside over time. But I think we got some feedback from Planning and Zoning Commission that, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, like, let's do it, and let's ask the hard questions, and let's really understand what kinds of decisions folks will be making, because they are the, the first public body after staff that an applicant encounters. And I think we had a really good discussion with P and Z at our check-in last month about, you know, making sure that we're aligned. So they shouldn't be going in totally different directions than the board is. That'll only confuse people and make the process impossible to navigate. So this is our opportunity to kind of seek that type of alignment and make sure we're on the same page. Jeff, is there anything you wanted to add from kind of P and Z perspective on this?
Nope, happy to be here, support however I can.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we just dive in and talk to folks? Okay. Well, Anne's listed first, so how about Anne, if you want to come up, and we'll chat for a few minutes? Well, I don't think we have to, you know, belabor this and go all the way through them, or even all ask a question, but I think if we have a couple of questions per candidate, we'll be in good shape. Maybe just refresh our memory, Anne, on kind of who you are, your background, and, and why you. The first question is what motivated you to apply for a position, or to reapply in this case? I think it'd be a good place to start, and then have a couple other questions.
I've been in the valley since.
That needs to be green. Yours needs to be green, and ours needs to be red.
I know, it's, it's very hard.
Moved to the valley in nineteen ninety-six, started out in Basalt for a couple years. Got the boy, moved to Carbondale. That's what it was back then. So I've been in Carbondale since nineteen ninety-nine. I did the Buy a Town House, and jumped that into a house. So I've been around a long time. I started out in the valley cooking. That was my degree. Worked my way into the counting field. I did bookkeeping. I've done that over twenty years now. So I've had the experience of being just, you know, an up-valley working stiff, trying to make it in this valley, and kind of trying to recreate a career so that I didn't have to work nights and weekends, and tourist holidays, and all those things. And so that's how I ended up here in the town. As for P and Z, I was involved with the town planning all the way back when I moved here in ninety-nine, because that was a big year, when the city market stuff first started, was, you know, ninety-nine, two thousand, around there. There was a comprehensive plan, community involvement then. I've always tried to be involved with that type of thing. And I would say it's been about five or six years that I did want to get involved because I thought that people like me aren't always represented on the board.
That, what do you mean by people like you aren't always represented on?
Because I, I think it's an amazing privilege to be able to have the time to serve. And a lot of people that are just working to get by, I could never live in Carbondale now. I could never move here and live here. That's not feasible for me or my husband with either of our jobs. And a lot of Carbondale is that way. And I think when we saw, especially the Spanish meeting for the comprehensive plan, one of the big comments was to not make Carbondale too nice. And I understand where that's coming from because people are scared of being priced out. Now, does that come in P and Z? Not really, but it made me want to be involved to make sure that regular people that can't afford to move to a nicer neighborhood or can't afford to fix up their house, you know, are understood by the rest of the town.
Thanks. Other questions from the board?
I, oh, we go?
Okay.
I think I was, I was sort of looking at these questions and I really only had one question in mind and I see that it has actually sort of the 13th question, the last one there. But, but in terms of a willingness to disagree cordially, but also stick to your guns and not, not feel sort of that you're moving with the tide. And I agree with alignment, but I also, I think to the extent alignment in that we're all trying, that we're all looking for a greater good, but there might be multiple ways to get that. There might be good reasons for good people to disagree on things. And I'm just curious how you handle that or if, not necessarily if you've handled it, but how, how that, how you might handle that in a position with, with P and Z.
Well, I think we all hopefully have the same common goal, which is to get the best thing for Carbondale that we can. And P and Z, we're a little more hemmed in because we do have to follow the UDC. We do have to follow the comp plan. There's room to affect some policy. There's room to affect how projects look. But I don't know that I want a town that micromanages projects. I don't know that that's necessarily fair to people that are, you know, applying for variance or those type of things. But we also have to keep in mind what people in Carbondale want. And I think it's really important. I wish we had more community involvement. I know you should be careful what you wish for. Because there are projects that lots of people have feelings about. But I think it's very important to weigh what those neighbors are saying, what they think impacts might be. And if we have the opportunity to make it better for both sides, that's where, you know, the important part of our job lies.
Thanks. Did you have some, Erica?
Yep, well, thanks for serving so far.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again. Is there anything in your short time as an alternate already that has surprised you about serving on Planning and Zoning or that is challenged, has been challenging?
I like the depth of discussion we have, which I didn't think I would like it as much because it's certainly different watching it. I'd be like, oh, God, won't they hurry up? But I, I've really appreciated the differences of viewpoints from the current board. I think we've all managed to hear each other and I really try to understand where people are coming from. I ask a lot of questions. My husband is driven crazy by it. So for P and Z, he's been okay with that. But I, I do like to understand, you know, the crux of if there's a disagreement or, you know, something that we don't see eye to eye on. I, I like to understand why. And I hope to say as open as I can to other people's opinions.
Okay. Jeff, did you have anything you wanted to ask around?
No, I've served more than a couple of meetings with Anne. I'm glad she's reapplying. I may have some questions for Franco, who I haven't met yet.
Great. You have Colin.
Being a layperson, are there things that you think, having served as far as you had, that would be helpful in helping making that transition as a Planning and Zoning Committee member easier? Like, are there things that, there's lots of background and obviously people are, are there things, this is just for us to be thinking about?
I do have an advantage because I did come in being able to read plans. But that's probably not a norm for a layperson involved in P and Z. Part of my bookkeeping has been for GCs for years, so I've learned because I had to. In terms of terms and stuff, it's, you know, some studying. But I, I would say the bigger thing is counting on your members to help illuminate if there's something you're not understanding. I will say staff is extremely supportive. If you call them with a question, they're there, you know, they're great. I can't speak highly enough about Jared and Kay. You know, if I've had a question, Jared will answer the phone and spend as much time as I need to talk it out. But in terms of, you know, getting laypeople on there, because I feel like we've lost people that didn't fulfill their full terms and I, I'm not privy to why. But that's a little bit of a disappointment. And I don't know if it's a workload thing or, you know, I'm not sure. But I hope everybody feels comfortable on the board. And as a layperson on the board, I, I hope to help build that culture.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Anne? All right, thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Franco. There he is. Welcome back. Thanks for reapplying. We can start with just a quick refresher. Also, we have your application here, but just for anybody who's listening or whatever, just a little bit about yourself, why you're interested in serving on the commission and then we'll ask a couple of questions.
Yeah, this is the third time that I've been in front of you, getting interviewed by you. I was also interviewed in front of P and Z in the beginning of May. So they liked me and I hope you guys like me this time around.
We've liked you every time. We've just had lots of people for not enough positions. So thank you.
It's part of Jared adding in some questions. Because I think it's a equitable solution to finding out who should be appointed on the board. Because I always want to know what did I lack, I guess, in comparison to the other people that I was interviewing with. You know, I'm a professional. I am a planner for Picken County. I was also a planner in the city of Salida. I have background in planning. And I just want to be a part of this community, volunteer my time between working in Aspen, working for Picken County and also now Thursday nights being to participate in P and Z meetings. So I just love to hopefully check boxes and be appointed by you all.
Thank you. Questions for Franco? And Jeff, you want to start?
Thanks for applying, Franco. And I appreciate your professional experience in planning. I think that's as a, as a non-designer serving on P and Z, like I've learned a lot from the people in the industry who understand the nuts and the bolts. One thing that I might ask is some of the work P and Z does is bifurcated between like regulatory and then more creative when we are looking at code amendments and able to be creative and kind of influence policy versus responding to an applicant. Can you talk about your experience in following the kind of letter of the code versus thinking creatively when we do have the opportunity to amend or improve our code?
Yeah, I've, I've been a part of both those kinds of projects as a professional. You have sometimes, but this thing goes in and out a little bit, but.
Maybe try the other.
A little closer to it, just a little closer to it.
All right. I don't want to be too loud, so yeah. When I was in Salida, we were working on a master plan. Some of the master plans were for the, the city-owned property. So we had a lot of design charrettes, public input. And it was a creative process with the community. So it wasn't just about the letter of the law, but about the input of the community and kind of getting creative with what the community wants to see on this city-owned parcel. Whereas with the letter of the law, I do that all the time, every single day. Bring things, recommendations to the P and Z, BSCC, whomever. So that's, that's just common practice and what I do. So I mean, explaining it as possible, but, you know, I, I work with the land use code. I, I study the land use code. There's always something new every single time I open the land use code. And there's a new way to interpret it. So it's never just a black and white document. It's a, it's a, it's a changing document. And so, yeah, if you do come in with something that can be better for the community, that's where the creativeness kind of comes into play and how you want to adapt.
Thanks. Great, thanks. Yeah, go ahead, Christina.
Thank you, Franco, for being here again. I'm glad you are applying again. And with your expertise, I think that's exciting. And I just wanted to ask a question. Are there parts of Carbondale you believe are underutilized or could benefit from strategic comprehensive planning?
Question. So I definitely think there are parts of Carbondale that can benefit from comprehensive planning. I think one of them being the industrial area, just to name a specific. And I, and I do think not just, you know, just an idea, a future, a tool to guide that Eric could be helpful. That's a specific kind of master plan. For comprehensive, I'm looking at the map over there, just kind of taking a look at it. But the, the comprehensive plan, I think, I think was adopted sometime in the teens and typically comprehensive plans get adopted every 10 years. So, you know, we may be coming due in the future and a lot has changed since it was last adopted. COVID was a big one. People moving to more rural communities. And, you know, the comprehensive plan probably speaks for part of that, but maybe not to the extent that it was planned for back in 2018 or whatever it was. So it's something to, you know, as we're moving forward in the next couple of years, Jared, we can think about, you know, the next rendition and, you know, how could we better implement an overall comprehensive plan? And also integration with the map as well. I think it's going to be a great kind of intertwining.
Cool, thank you. Any other questions? This side of the board?
Thank you for your persistence.
Yeah, and I think in the past, I mean, if you're like, what did I do wrong? There's nothing that you did wrong. I mean, we've, we've really been really impressed by you and in all sincerity, appreciate that you've come back. I think sometimes when there's, there were other people who were kind of at this point then who had come in a couple of times and had lived here a long time and all that. So I, I think it's, it's great that we're going to be able to appoint you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I just spent a weekend in Salida and looked at so many things from sort of that urban planning lens and the similarities with Carbondale. So I think that'll be a really interesting experience to bring here too. They seem like they're on a really good track over there, so.
I agree.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jared, my only question is, do we have to do like a first alternate, second alternate, or just alternates? And then that's worked out when there's a vacancy to vote?
You know, we, we've historically only done alternates at the P and Z, but the longer appointed alternate has kind of tended to be the first and second. So in this case, Anne would be the first.
Okay, so we don't have to designate it anywhere in that. Great. Okay, we can discuss as much as we like. Jeff, if you want to add anything else from P and Z perspective, we'd love to hear it. And then I think we can move pretty quickly, probably to a motion.
I think having a full slate of P and Z commissioners would be a great thing.
I'll move to reappoint Anne Crimmer as an alternate with a term expiring on May 31st, 2028 to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Should I just do both at the same time? And move to appoint Franco Palumbo as an alternate with a term expiring on May 31st, 2028 to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Erica. Any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Franco. Welcome to the commission and thank you, Anne. Welcome back. That's fantastic. Thanks, Jeff, for being here and helping us with that.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
Okay, our final item on the agenda tonight is the Carbondale Aquatics Center four-week schedule and funding recap. Maybe we could start with reintroductions. You guys have been here a couple of times, but we see a lot of faces. So names are always helpful as we get started and then we'll let you have it.
Sounds good. Guess I'll kick it off. Thanks, Mayor and trustees. I am Joe Farstead, working with Wember as a construction management consultant for the pool project.
Great, thanks, Jeff.
Good to see y'all again.
I'm Brian and the Aquatics and Health and Wellness Coordinator for the town.
Hey, family, you're Parks and Rec Director.
All right, thank you.
Cool. I'll kick it off, guys. I think my portion's first up, but I, I am excited. This project is unique in the sense that most of the time you're doing a capital project, really real when you start coming out of the ground. Well, most of the work, the energy and the money is subterranean on this project. So now that we actually have the pool house going vertical, it's, it's super cool to see. You can see the shape. You can kind of see how it's going to feel. So that's really exciting. On schedule activities is worth noting. We did do a cumulative master schedule update the last week of May. Looked at all the durations, looked at the sequences and we are tracking extremely well to finish in October as we've been committing to. So that's, that's a good deal. Obviously, you can see we're coursing the brick up. We're going to start doing the mock-up, which will be really exciting to see for all of the glass block that will integrate into the CMU veneer. So that is forthcoming. I believe another week that actually should be on the ground. So I'm really excited to see that. Some of the other big milestones, it doesn't seem like it is just bridging the gap between Forest Service and our property. Now that that's all stitched together, it looks clean. It's kind of nice to see how that union's gonna, gonna come together. Upcoming stuff, SPA excavation, you know, all the dirty stuff you don't see, all the in-wall roughing, you know, when you're doing a CMU building. There's a lot of infrastructure that gets buried behind the wall you can't see, but it's well coordinated and going really well. Yeah, June 16th, next week, just like I said, for that block. Sorry, I'm going through the notes in here. Budget update, guys. We kept it simple. You know, we overwhelmed you with data. Now we're keeping it simple. One thing we probably should still put in here is just the incurred cost of dates. You can see as the project progresses how much we have spent as it relates to the budget. So I think we will include that again next month. But right now, no new news. We approved change order for consent agenda the previous meeting I was here. So budget remains the same. Tammy included this approved at alternates as it related to the December 24 board decision, and I think it's kind of an important document. So trellis and PV mounted array, the plumbed aquatic. So trellis and PV mounted array, the plumbed aquatic features and non-plumbed aquatic features, play elements were all approved. The original budget was approved in December was at 563089. Those are rough order of magnitude numbers. So we've declined the shade structure. Not going to do that after a pretty good and thoughtful deliberation. We determined it just, A, cost too much and B, wasn't necessary. So that was a a committee decision. It's worth noting in here. So that was declined, and I think it was an appropriate decision, guys.
Ross, I'll speak to that one.
Okay, because that was a group decision amongst that amongst other things, and that's.
It's, we'll have shade, but I'll explain in a few minutes. Just not that highly engineered shade.
Which was the whole point. Sorry, trustee Ross, maybe I spoke out of turn. We'll get to it. Yeah, my apologies. Scope adjustments. So this is just a recap of the contingency, more condensed version, hopefully easier to read and understand. But what is worth noting is we still have plenty of contingency at this point in the project to finish it. Pending items that are still in the bucket that I haven't been accepted yet, but are still under the limit for accepting steel trellis design changes and some winter conditions. These are construction contingency, guys, so I want to reiterate, anytime we talk about construction contingency, we control those dollars, but it does not increase the total project cost. This is money that's already been allocated for the project, so it's just worth mentioning that. Yeah, otherwise, I think I do want to dress this up with a few more pictures next month. That was one thing Chris did a great job on, and I think we have failed on. And it's just, it moves so quick that I almost wanted to sneak some pictures in here for the for the presentation today. But yeah, walls are getting corsted, site is completely backfilled, wet wells are in, dry wells are in, everything's coming together really nicely. All the shallow utilities are in too now, guys, so worth mentioning all the things you can't see. And I'm I'm excited to to see you guys at the site visit next month.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Yeah, that's all I have. If you guys have any questions for progress.
And how do we want to orchestrate this? Do we want to, it sounds like there's some questions that you all are going to address. Do we want to go through all the presentation and then ask questions, or I I don't know?
If you want me to speak to the shade structure right now, so that Ross's head stops spinning.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, let's talk about that.
So we got the final pricing for the shade structure as it was originally designed.
And just to be clear, this is the shade structure over?
Over the recreation pool and some of the seating.
And so this is not the trellis with the solar array?
Right.
This is a different?
Not that.
Okay, all right.
French shade structure.
That shade structure was, I forget what the measurements were, 30 by 40, it was hu- it's huge. And it was being supported by six 10-inch posts that the ones that were under the pool deck were highly engineered and the cost that, on the GMP, the cost said TBD, because we didn't have any price. And then when we did the allowance in the at alternates, the allowance was $20,000. And when the price came in, it was 100. And they needed an answer in like a day, because they were sat in the concrete and doing the other things. And I could not justify spending that $100,000 on that shade structure where we have, we will have some other options to be able to rearrange different kinds of shade in the in the aquatic center at a later date, whether that's using some of the owner's contingency money that might be left, or whether we budget for it after a year of of use to see what's really needed out there. One, we had a couple of other things with regard to that. One was, it was a very unusual cover on that straight shade structure that is not a cover that is generally rated for as designed. It was not a cover that was generally rated for use over a playground or a pool. And so we didn't really have the time to do a deep dive and talk about whether or not that added any liability for us. And also, as designed, it would not have been able to be easily lowered or raised in a storm or in a on a cloudy day or what have you. There's no way the lifeguards would have been able to handle it. It would have been a public works job, basically, to go and take that actual net off of the top. And so all of those things put together and the timeliness needs to make a decision. I was, without having the time to come back to the board, I was not going to add another $80,000 to the budget. So that's that's what happened with that. There is other shade, there are umbrellas still, there is still the shade trellis. It's only that one shade net that was so highly engineered and so large. So that's what happened with that. We're trying to be very, very cautious about needs versus wants and and not wanting to add any more cost to the project.
From from, may I speak? Okay, from my perspective, we, or certainly the way that I approached the decision to approve those packet, that package of adults was collectively. And if we could have gone piecemeal, we would have gone piecemeal. And, you know, a hot tub, I think, was was half a million dollars, basically. And and now shade, which was the number one of, I think, probably the number one or high on the list of all the surveys. And 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 the reason why we had chosen that spot to be, well, why, why, the justification for the decision to choose that spot against community against community decision was because of existing shade. And so we've 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 taken down trees left and right on that spot. And that wasn't, that wasn't a discussion during the bond issue. Now, we've we've promised a shade structure and we're removing it. I don't, my understanding, I don't have a picture in front of me to see exactly what we no longer are providing and have promised. But but we are in a spot now where I don't think we're we're giving folks what we said we were going to give them most recently. And the fact that it had to be a decision made in a matter of days or hours speaks to a larger problem. And we shouldn't have decisions that are that big and that, you know, that that conceivably, I mean, it didn't, it would, looking at something like that, you know it needs to be engineered. There, I, you know, we could all look at that and say, this is a wind issue. It shouldn't be something that we now decide, in my opinion, that oh, we can't do it because of wind. I mean, how do we get this far in the process and and make that decision? It's also, it's also an aesthetic decision. I mean, what we have, you know, it's it's part of that that whole thing. It was considered and designed aesthetically and creates a space there that's that's both shaded and beautiful. And I don't think we're going to get the same effect with some patio umbrellas. I mean, talk about things that you have to worry about more in a windstorm. You know, if we've got a dozen umbrellas instead, you know, that's that's more things to worry about, not less. I'm disappointed. I wish there was another way to approach this. And I I hate that it's taking something off the table that we can't put back.
Ross, I just want to make sure I was clear that we didn't take it off because of wind. We took it off because it was, it would have added $80,000 to the GMP.
But I heard discussions here about wind, about concerns about wind and not doing, and not having, not being comfortable with that. So so that's that's what I'm hearing and I'm feeling, I'm I'm my my concern is that that's something that should have been addressed much earlier in the process. And I don't know whose, you know, whose 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 role that is. I think there's probably lots of folks who needed to sign off on that. But it's 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 disheartening to get to this point and see that one of the sort of fundamental aesthetic and functional portions of this this pool is just sort of vanished. And I wouldn't, I would not have voted for a hot tub at for a second if it weren't part of the whole package that we voted for. And now it's, you know, we're kind of piecemeal, moving stuff out, and I'm not I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay, thanks, Ross. Erica?
Um, well, I am totally opposite of Ross. I would, I'm still wholly supportive of us having a hot tub and really wouldn't trade it for anything. And, I mean, I just see this as, I mean, so I support staff decision on this one. I I saw the $20,000 in our adults and I was like, ooh, that seems a little low for what I know from steel prices and stuff. And so I just think I was not surprised to see that this had to be cut, and I appreciate you guys making that decision. I don't think it's that key to the overall aesthetic of the pool. I think people will miss some shade, but we always got cooked at the pool anyway. And sometimes you want to be warm after being in the pool. So I'm I'm fine with it. And I do think, I think if you had come to us with another $80,000 with the concerns that my fellow trustees and I have had on the budget, that that would have been another problem that others would have had a problem with. So I I just wanted to chime in and say that I I support this decision.
Erica, any other questions or feedback on the the schedule, the current status of the project budget, or that particular staff level decision on the shade structure, before we move on to hearing from staff on any other items? Okay, let's keep going then. Thank you, Joe. Brian and Eric, anything else to update us on?
Yeah, you know, Brian did kind of look at, and maybe it is appropriate, Brian did look at some other of our local pools and to see what type of shade structure, you know, they have. And and with this decision, we didn't take away the shade from the pool. We still have shade at the pool. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that we have designed and engineered and safe shade at the pool with our in-the-ground mounts on the umbrellas, but also in the in the trellis itself. We'll double not only as a PV bifacial solar panels, but also as as a shade shade spot on the property.
When you mentioned other pools, I mean, is this is this a common feature that other pools have that we will lack, or?
So in the last six years that I've lived in the valley, there are now three pools that have been redone, Eagle, Rifle, and Basalt. None of those pools have shade over any of their parts of their pool directly. Eagle just opened five days ago or something like that, too. When looking at their project and their history of their project, too, they had some shade sales as an alternate funding option. I don't believe they were approved, but I don't know 100% on that. But that was shade structure that they were doing, similar to what we're doing with the trellis. It was going to be off to the side, located near the pool, provide an additional space for parties, provide additional pay space for patio furniture and stuff like that. So, I mean, from an operational standpoint, the only time I've really seen a shade structure not even similar to what we were building, but just a shade structure over any kind of pools, it usually ends up being a separate kid pool off to the side. That's, you know, that's the equivalent of our zero entry before the stairs into the activity pool that it's kept separate. It's a fenced-in gated area, you know, there's not typically lifeguards in that area, too. And it's not something that affects space on the the pool deck really either. So. And, yeah, when we went through and did decide that we weren't going to do the shade structure, one of the first things I did do was I did put one just feeler request out there just to see, you know, what our options look like. So there there are other options that we can consider in the future, as Lauren said, through either budgeting through it in, you know, a 2026 one-time purchase or a future year purchase or something of that degree. But it would be a little different than what we've explored so far for shade structure.
Okay, well, thanks for doing that due diligence and finding out what else is out there. Anything else you guys wanted to include in your update? I mean, there's a memo on the funding recap. I don't know if you want to touch on that, Eric, and if there's anything else.
Yeah, so, you know, Kevin, Lauren, and and I and Brian all looked at, you know, kind of how to kind of represent better for you, you know, information on where we sit to date, like to 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 the date of of this presentation. So so this was kind of a way to look at where we sit on the on the funding side, what we have committed and appropriated funding with, you know, that's really real numbers. The fundraising to date, grant secured real numbers and donation secured real numbers for you to look at. And with the total committed and appropriated funding, plus the fundraising, we wanted to look at current total project cost with that total appropriated funding and fundraising and see where that puts us, right? And so that that gave us kind of, this is the first look really that we've seen showing that kind of budget deficit, right? And and throughout the project. And so this was a little bit of a dive into really trying to see where we are to date and and what our what our fundraising needs are, what what are existing grants that are out right now, where that would, where that would take us. This was just a good number for us to look at, to see where we are at at this date. And so hopefully it's providing you guys with a little bit more information, too, because it it did help us wrap our heads around where we are. You know, and and what what efforts, where our effort should be on the granting side and on the fundraising side to to cover that deficit and get in a better position, so.
We'll just add something to that real quickly. And these numbers, as we said before, are constantly changing. So this went in the packet on Thursday, and since Thursday, we've gotten another 18,000 and change. So our fundraising numbers are continuing to build.
I got another 250 before, or 2,500 before we started the meeting.
All right.
I mean, the, yeah, so it's already $20,000 down on that deficit than it was last week.
So that's really the only number in here that's changing, though, just so we're clear. Like, the rest of these numbers aren't changing, but the donations secured.
That's correct.
Area C there, that number.
Grants potentially, depending on what else we might get.
Great. So the grants secured and donations secured, those may change. Yeah, questions on this call?
Yeah, thanks for the update. On the grants, are we going to run into any cash flow challenges of when they? Like, are they in our bank account already?
Which, which grants? No, most of the grants are reimbursable grants, so we'll have to complete the project to be reimbursed, yeah.
Okay, okay. My other question was relating to the contingencies. So on page two, there's the owner's contingency, shows us at 241.
Yeah, that's correct.
So outside of something happening, we should have that at the end of the project.
Yeah, I'm, it's it's fair to assume something will happen, something tragic, probably not.
My question is, that can potentially help with our shortfall.
Absolutely, yeah. And anything from the contractor side?
Oh, it's my other question.
Is our money. And I'll tell you one thing, I'm not, as we've kind of established, responsible for the the campaign. But I am responsible for managing the general contractor and their contract. And their contract returns everything to us with the exception of their designated fee. So at the end of the job, I will do a forensic audit, financial audit, and anything outside of that, where it be buyout savings or uncommitted costs, whatever, it comes back to the town. And does that yield big results at the end of a project? Sometimes. Does it receive, you know, reveal some results? Always. So there will be something we find at the end of the job outside of those contingencies.
Great.
Confidently say that.
No, that's helpful. And I appreciate all the work on the fundraising and all that kind of stuff, but it seems with our contingencies, we've got another cushion if we never got any more grant funding or contribution.
And interestingly enough, that's that's originally how we were going to present this. But then with those contingency balances, we wanted to see those as spent, right? I mean, that's the way we should look at them, right? We're going to spend those. So that's why we we actually had them in here and pulled them out, because we wanted to see where we actually were if we spent all that contingency. And so that's where this, that's where this exercise kind of led us to, you know, if we spent all the contingency, here's where we are to date.
So in in previous reports, oh, yeah, you have the risks. Okay, good, okay, that helps. Thank you.
One short question about the the glass bricks. And I know, you know, that's that's sort of the design element to some extent. And I want to make sure that there's enough time and money, I guess, for Andy and and her crew to, are there, is there time and money for them to play with that and with lights to make sure that what they're, that what they're getting is what they designed? I know some of that doesn't really, can't really be done a little bit until you've got it. I mean, we certainly didn't, you know, approve like multiple months of mockups or anything. But I know that there's a bit of a vision there, and I just want to make sure that we at least, you know, don't shortchange that, because that's something we can't go back. If it's a matter of four inches to get an LED light in and do something cool that she wants to do, I want to make sure that that we have that opportunity.
Yeah, that, that opportunity, oh, sorry, is, is built into the schedule. So when the glass block arrives next week, first order of business is to build a mockup.
Okay.
And that's going to be, we actually have a full day review. What's that?
They had samples though, too, right, previously?
We, we, I think we saw the, the material.
The material, but not like the product we're actually getting and enough of it to actually do a structural.
Okay, so I just want to make sure there's a little bit of time there for, for her to play with that and make sure that what we've got is what we're, you know, at least close to what we, we were promised.
Yeah, good question. Thank you. Sorry, I'm just, just gonna say one more thing that relates to the shade sale. And maybe I shouldn't even say this, but guys, we got rid of it, but I'm a builder, right? I know that if, in the future, if you identify that it is necessary, you can add one. We didn't like work ourselves out of this. Tammy and I looked at it. We studied it. You could do a cannoli reduction. There's really cool options with minimal intrusion into existing adjacent landscape, right? So if you need something, something can be added later at a much lower rate. I just think that that thing was overdesigned to a pretty high degree of safety. So that's, I just wanted to close with that, so.
Okay, so, thank you. Any other questions on the pool?
Thank you.
Thanks for this update.
All right. Thanks very much, everybody. And that, I believe, was our last item on the agenda. So we'll see you all hopefully Thursday at the meet and greet for Town Manager finalist, Third Street Center, 5:30. And then here, I think we start at 8:30 on Friday. Is that right?
Did you get your whole committee of people put together?
Yeah, yep. Patrick got a good leadership panel for us, I believe.